We're back in regular session. Uh, we'll pick up with the lead please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the stand of our nation's liberty, justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to survive the eclipse of the event. We're here, so I guess the world, the world stands on. Uh, okay, we have a special presentation right next to you.
Richard.
Clicker, right there.
Yeah, nice. Hello? Noddy here? Good, Noddy's there. Okay. So, we've been talking about Benville facility challenges for a while. I know the board is the super head as before at Tulsa, but our strategic planning sessions, this came up a great deal. I want to take this off some good stuff. So here's some good stuff. These are our projects, the process of the, uh, how the, how the projects are proceeding throughout the district, how they're progressing. And this is the first one with the Lakeview Lake Lot. And this was done before, but on vacation now it's a little different, there's more work done. I gotta tell you, it really looks great. If you get a chance to go in there and look at it, it's, there's those three classrooms on the left now, they're much bigger than I even thought they were gonna be. And did you get a chance to see anything?
I did, I went over there, I took a camera over there.
Pretty cool, right?
It's amazing, I'm picking.
I know, yeah. So now, they have, they still have a nice sized library, but it's more modern library. Because before you had the desktop computers, now we moved away from desktop and we're buying, you know, portable things that don't take much further. Uh, and here's the value of the roof. Target taken a good picture of a roof. Even when it's done, it doesn't look like, you know, but I figured you got a pile, pile of rubbish, rubbish. So here's our strategic plan 2022. We had over a hundred participants. One of the goals came out to be creating a safe and secure learning environment equipped to deliver 21st century education, educational expectations using efficient and sustainable facilities district wide. And the objective D, which I think all this stuff intends to, is continue to address needs while enhancing the existing facilities and planning for elimination of use of rentals and substandard instructional space. And our board of education goal number two, that's on the agenda for tonight, is to develop a sustainable plan of facilities that eliminates rentals, temporary structures, substandard and dilutive instructional space, and implement it over a multi-year period. So just to remind you, these are the types of things that, this is what's called substandard space. You have a classroom with two teachers teaching two different subjects at the same time that's not separated by a wall. We also have students walking out to the trailer, and they feel because the, both trailers are currently and will be for 1718 utilized for construction. Music, it will be out there, as well as some other sessions. The Lakeview Community Center has a shared, a shared wall, a three-quarter wall, and it has a, uh, speech classes going on at the same time as our library. And there's no full wall to the ceiling, so there, it's definitely an issue, and it has to be improved at the year of the year. So, along with this, when we were talking about all different solutions, we figured, let me talk a little bit about some other projects that, that may be, that may be good on the agenda, on our, on the horizon that we've been talking about for a while. One of them is value locker rooms. If you remember, we were planning on getting the value locker rooms done this year, this was something we were working on this summer, but we did have to place a roof over the gym. It was more important than the locker rooms, just because of the leaky. So we're at the, at the stage now where we're looking at some other possible projects. These are all on the long range facilities plan, on that maintenance matrix, these are all the highest priority ones that are listed on there. The HVAC in the gym and the bridge windows, if you look at that bridge at Valley View, those are, those are the only original windows left in the district. Exterior windows are single-pane, um, and they're currently being replaced. And that whole HVAC unit up there, it's not functioning properly. The value of you family computer site, consumer science room, basically a home back room. If you look at the last test condition of the, of the, uh, of the cabinets, flooring is, it's still a spastic flooring, and, um, it just needs an, needs an update, needs renovation. This next thing is something I think is very important for, for the future, is our roofing, is our roofing, basically our roofing map, if you can call it that. It's a, it's a matrix of how our, when our roofs have been installed, and when they should be replaced according to warranty and our experts. So, when a warranty goes, it doesn't necessarily mean replaced immediately, but you have to start preparing for replacing. So, right now, the last piece of roof that needs to be replaced in the district, and it's not immediate, it's not immediately needed, is 60,199 square feet at Lakeview, which was basically the project that was done in 2001. So it's the addition and some other roofing that they replace then. It was a fifteen, a fifteen-year roof, and we are now on year seventeen, I believe. So, if you look at all those other numbers, it means that roofing has been completed, and it's not really in need for a while. And that, that one section with soft costs is approximately 1.8 million dollars. So, we have some solutions for substandard spaces, these things we've been talking about for a while. Solution one, actually, if you remember, back in the, the first part, which we, we haven't really brought up anymore, we're still using that. To me, it's not a good solution, and none of the word numbers on it was, nor did it talk. So, solution one, as a viable option, which we do not, I do not think is a viable option, is a small addition to Lakeview, which would be about 8,000 square feet. The cost is more than I would anticipate, that 4.5 million. The reason why I can't recommend doing that is because if we could clean all of our funds, and we would know, we would not have any money to handle some of the other needs like that 1.8 million roofing. Number two, larger addition at Riverview, to move the pre-K and other special ed classes and free up some space, about 12,000 square feet plus an elevator at Riverview, it'll cost about 7.2 million dollars. Then the last one is to do some work within the footprint at Lakeview, but to eliminate the use of trailers for students, and eliminate the use of walls, substandard space, and also eliminate the use of waivers for bathrooms for students for classes that are, that are required to have a bathroom. And that's an approximate 1 million dollars to do that. Here's some pros and cons of each. We're not recommending the top one, the base, kind of the base, just no more money to do any of the projects. Number two, 12,000 square foot addition at Riverview, it would, one of the pros would be it would eliminate the trailers for all purposes, it would accommodate all programs, it would start to better balance the populations, it would allow for competition of other, I'm sorry, completion of other new projects, it would allow for some room to grow, the state would pay between 25 and 35% of the payments after going for a referendum, and it would be a good time for us to vote on a referendum due to the fact that the debt, our current debt that was, that was acquired in 2001 would be coming off in the next two years. The cons, obviously, are high cost, you have to go to a referendum, the cost of a referendum is about 100,000 dollars, that's before you win the referendum, that's actually the cost to go to a referendum. But the main concern, the main con of this one, is the uncertainty in the town development. We've been talking about town development as well, and the town has been talking about town development for a while. We, it's just a moving target that no one can really, uh, iron, uh, can really hammer down and figure out what the exact numbers are. And I believe the tenor of the, of the board right now, as well as the administration, is it's just that much uncertainty to go to a referendum for approximately 10 million dollars without, and with the big possibility of having to go for another referendum in the future, because, because we'd have to accommodate some of the growth that's, that's proposed in the district, in the town. So even though our, our strategic planning committee and our feedback from the, from the group that was there recommended to go that way, that last con really changed our minds, because it was, it really wasn't at the forefront at that time, but things have changed since then. Number three, projects in Lakeview, now that the, the working within the footprint, being not expanding the footprint, getting all children out of the trailers, providing bathrooms for rooms that need bathrooms, and it knows substandard space. The, the pros would be obviously the lower cost, it allows us to use other monies that we have already in our, in our reserves for other projects, and the biggest pro is not having to use a referendum. The cons are there's absolutely no room for growth, so we would really shoehorning all of our programs in. If there was some growth, that would not accommodate the growth, meaning if we needed a fifth pre-K, or, or we needed to open up a ninth section in, which really, a sixth section over at Lakeview, we wouldn't have the space for it. The Riverview Trail, the Riverview or Lakeview trailers would still be needed for staff, so they would not be demolished, we'd still be using them. There's no state debt service aid, and we would most likely need to do some changes to Riverview or Lakeview schedule if anything's possible. It would be a, a change to what we call collaborative time with the teachers. Some of that time about to change to, in order to fit everybody in a room and help with the trailers. So here's possible, here's a budget for all the projects. We did all the projects that we first, that I showed you, that include the addition, the light schools renovation, the gym locker room, the HVAC city, adding the air conditioning to the Valley View's gym, the bridge replacement. We also have, uh, the all-purpose showroom at the rooftop unit, the Riverview, that's the unit replacement. Also, the athletic field renovations, and the front festival security district wide, as well as the singering roof. The total would be 1,690,000 dollars. That's including, what did I say? 11,690,000 dollars. And that is the total number including soft costs. So how would we finance this? The finances would be referendum projects. If we were going to referendum, we would probably pare it down to a few needed projects of about, about 10 million dollars. The roof, the, uh, the addition at Riverview, about 7.2, the Lakeview roof, uh, change, which we'd probably done in the federal area after the referendum goes, would be about 1.8 million. The value locker rooms are about 437,000, the security vestibles, that's all three schools. Just to remind everybody what that is, is when you come into the building, the manager should have what's called a man trap. You would come into one area, and you'd have to be buzzed into the building twice. You'd be buzzed into the tolling area, and then if you're cleared, you'd be buzzed into the door on the building. It's something that was identified on three different security, on a set of board as, uh, as, uh, commissioned, and it's set to do these, these man traps. Uh, so that's approximately 400,000 dollars. The total would be about 9.8 million. All right, here's the numbers for a 10 million dollar referendum. If, in, in 1718, the, the average taxpayer is paying 4985 in debt service. In 1920, if we pass this, it would go from 4985 this year to 6690 in nineteen, in the year 1920. There would need to dip in 1819 because the last year of paying off the, the old referendum, the, the money goes to half. Okay, so the other option is that Plan Three, which would be to do the various projects at, at, um, Lakeview, we have 750,000 dollars in this budget to address those things right now. So, we have a good portion of it, and we also have plenty of money, 2 million plus reserves that we could use on this project to make sure it's done. Timelines. Project one, again, not recommended. Project two, if we were going to referendum, we would discuss in August and September. We would have to vote in September, the board would have to vote on September 18 to appropriate 49,000 dollars for our architect to do the D O E submissions, drawings to referendum, and land surveys. The total cost of the referendum prior to actually winning the referendum is 100,000 dollars. And the bulk of the projects, if we went for a March 2018 vote, the both, the bulk of the projects would be done in summer 2019. So project three, various projects at Lakeview accommodate the students in standard space and use the trailers for staff only. We would have to discuss the plan in late 2017, prepare for bidding in early 2018, and this would allow for funds for your other projects on the list, we may be able to do some other funds. But next year, that would be a big project though. But I have a proposal from E I Associates to, for the board to look at in the couple months, to discuss, but I would like to have, have this approved in October and November to go and start planning and bidding by the earliest January, so that we can get out and get the most favorable bids. The earlier you are getting out, the better you get, the better you finish usually. So, after all the considerations that we talked about, with the committees, with this group right now, and considering all the other factors besides just what we need, but what, what other things impact our decisions here, at this time, I would recommend that we do option three, which is the project at Lakeview that does not expand the footprint, but it, it accommodates all the children and our programs in non-substandard space, and it would be done utilizing funds that we currently have in the budget or reserves. And we could also have this project substantially, if not fully complete, by the first aid school 2018, 19. Questions, discussion? Not sure how you want to handle that. Do you want to do it back up there or?
So, whether it be, anybody else question or comments chiming in? My only comment, I don't know if that was Steve, I'd say, I applaud you for starting the building grandfather clock and then kind of giving me very, very quickly and doing a stopwatch of the facilities, and it will change the plans. So, I like Plan B, I think it accomplishes a fair amount, and it doesn't open us up to the uncertainty at this time, so. But anyway, so anybody else have any comments?
Just, um, so I would kind of echo some of the comments. I appreciate you evaluating all the different options, and I think that most of the board knows this, but, um, since our last meeting, the town has made public that the, uh, well, at least one of the developments that were on the list to be built with the, you know, COA requirements, went from half one-bedroom and half two-bedroom to majority 40-some-one units being, um, three-bedroom units. So, I know the board's senior report went for the benefit of the public, that changes, that development, um, 20 students being expected to come out based upon our demographer's estimate to 71 students. Um, those are K through 12, uh, I don't remember the estimates on K through eight, but bottom line is it triples the amount of students who are the triples. Uh, that is dramatic effect obviously on a lot of things we're doing. So we thought we had a handle on where things were going, we realized very quickly that, um, things are changing faster than we can expect, and can have a dramatic effect on what that's going to do to our district. So, uh, I applaud Steve for taking that feedback from us, from the town, from himself, and understanding that, um, you know, one of the things that I expressed to Steve, and I know we've had a conversation about it, is, is just like he said, I would hate for us to go to referendum and fix a problem that we have today and not fix, all of a sudden have to go to referendum again and build another school in five years or eight, you know, five years, let's say, um, or even less than that. Um, so these developments could have a dramatic effect on, on, um, on our district and what we need from a facility standpoint. So, uh, that's one thing. The other thing that we want to applaud, Steve and everybody up here on, is continuing to build up our reserves. I think the district is appropriately using our reserves, meaning that we're knowing what we want to use it for. So when Steve says we have 2 million dollars in reserves, we're not 2 million dollars in reserve to go, hey, that's great, we're just going to keep it there. We know what we have to use it for, we know we have those roof projects on, which are 1.8, I believe you said. Um, so we know where we need to get to to be comfortable having a cushion, God forbid there's an emergency we need it, and being able to add up and use it as our savings, just like you would your house. If you said you needed a roof in a couple of years, you can save money a little bit along the way, and then be able to pay for it as opposed to figuring out a way to fund it, um, creatively in the future. So, uh, I, I think we're appropriately using our funds in that manner, I think we're saving the right amount, I think we're planning the right way to be able to, uh, do the things we need to do, like roofs and parking lots and, you know, big infrastructure projects like the, uh, like the, uh, locker room and things like that. So, uh, I wholeheartedly agree with option number three. I think that it addresses, uh, the concerns. I'd love to say option number two, but I just think at this point with the uncertainty, it's just not the right thing to do. So, uh, I, I support option number three also, and I appreciate Steve and the rest of the administration for kind of, uh, adapting based upon the different vote we're getting. So, thank you.
I'd like to say a couple of things. Uh, as I understand it, we are unwilling to, well, you know, several people are unwilling to do option two due to the uncertainty of the various recommendations and building projects and the rules coming down from the state about who has to, about where people have to build low-income housing. Is that a fair assessment?
Not just with low income, but it's any of the double. Low, I think the low income plays into it, but, and I want to speak for you guys, I think it's really, it's just building in general. So, it's, it's regular, what's that called, market rate and decolade. So I, what might you say about, how many of those units were going to decolade? Fifteen?
15%. It was 10 minutes. About 10 minutes.
So about 10 of those units were going to decolade, so.
So one of the things the town has really, when they look at their COA requirement, which they don't know what their COA requirement is, and it's part of the problem right now, is that, um, the state, COA doesn't exist anymore. They have thrown the affordable housing regulations to the courts. So they're waiting for the courts to tell them what they can do. In the process, builders have applied as what's called intermedia team of lawsuits, meaning that they're saying they want to build where there's 65 units, for instance, right now that the town is negotiating, the builder has come in and said 200-plus units they want to build. Uh, so the, the town had, those are, uh, built, the town has immunity from those lawsuits based upon builders' revenue. And the way they get immunity is to continue to show that they're working towards, um, allowing affordable housing to be done in town. But one of the things that they've required is any affordable housing in town, they don't want to build just affordable housing somewhere to be seen at a location we have on Route 10 currently in this town. So they don't want to have just low-income housing, they want to have low-income housing built into the community. And the way they've done that is 15 to 20% of any of these developments that are being built would be affordable, where the remaining would be market rate, they would be built in, they're not going to be, you know, five elements. Blood building would be, you know, segregated, it would be, you know, one building of one and two-bedroom units, and in there you have affordable, right next to your house market rate. So that's the reason why the numbers get so big. It's not all affordable, it's 15 to 20% of it are affordable, that means that 70, you know, eight, was that 80, 75, 80%, 85% are going to be 80 or 85% are your market rate. Um, so you, you multiply the amount of units you have to build by 5X.
Okay, so we are, we are basically uninterested in going to referendum, uh, because of the fact that we might have to go to referendum again later to build another, if it go, if it goes big, we would have to build another school, is that, is that correct?
One, one has one possibility. It's the uncertainty factor, they, they just don't know.
Okay, so, option three is we throw 1 million dollars at a bunch of, it's one, it's, we're looking at it as one project, but it could also be looked at as a bunch of little projects. We fixed this bathroom, we fixed that, we changed this room, we changed that, we're kind of like, we changed the Riverview library, so it's now about three classrooms, and a reconfigured, upgrade, upgraded, updated library. It, it seems to me that by doing that, all we have done is kicked the can down the road. This is something that we have talked about as a board before. We are fixing all the immediate problems, and we aren't addressing, we aren't addressing the fact that we are running out of space to manipulate. We, we are rapidly approaching the point where we can't take space from the library, or take space from there, or the other thing, or reconfigure the space that we've got. Uh, we're looking, we're, we're basically doing zero-sum game by playing with our existing space, and what we need is more space under our current obligations to the state and the decisions we've made. One thing that we can do that would completely fix all of our, I don't know what completely fix, it would free up several classrooms immediately, is to go back to a half-day kindergarten. Nobody's going to want to do that, I'm absolutely certain of this. Would that, several board meetings go, Barbara, you asked for other options. That's one option. I don't think it's necessarily the best one, but it's an option. Uh, and I think we really need to go, I think we need to go with the, uh, I think we need to go with the addition, I think we need to go with option two, and, and do an addition somewhere, I think Riverview is the place to do it, because we have work.
One thing I probably should have said while I was presenting was, the projects on my list of 1 million dollars should be done anyway. So it's not, they're not wasting projects, I know you can say they were, but even reconfiguring the library and making it more efficient is a, is a good use of the money. It, it needs flooring, it needs, it needs some of the, some of the things in there anyway. Another, another part of the project is, that dish, that building was built a long time ago, before it needed small room instructional space. So one of the projects would be to actually physically take a large room and make it into two small rooms, which is not free, there's, there's expenses there, because you've got to change the HVAC, the fire, and electric, there's a decent amount of work to be done there. But that building doesn't have enough of those anyway. And, and the third thing is those, these are the two worst bathrooms in the district. When, when it did, when it bore over the last, you might have to help with this area, but I would say at least 10, 15 years, has been slowly getting a bunch of bathrooms redone. They're, the two worst bathrooms that have not been redone would be these two. So the good thing about the 1 million dollars is these are things we should do anyway. It's not that we're going to do it and then not use it, if we did decide to go to a referendum, or if we built another school, or anything like that, it's still to be used, and it would make, make our space more efficient and upgraded. That's a big point that I need to offer.
I would say, I would agree with what you just said, Steve. When I look at your option three, that's basically what we've been doing the past two years. For us, this year we're doing Riverview's library, the year before that we did Valley View's library. These are the ways we've been handling it. And I, you know, am not as up to speed on all the billing in town as Mike is, since he attends all the meetings, and there is a lot of uncertainty out there. My concern is, you know, when you look at the timeline, if we were to pull on option two, if we were to, you said we would have to vote in September in order to do that.
Right.
And you still wouldn't have space for, occupy for kids until, remind me, 2019, this school year that starts September 2019?
Oh, boy, that's a long time. This is where we're all starting.
So how quickly will they put up their building? These apartments, they're coming.
They, the projections are, it's not going to happen fast, and then less than a month later they were voting, they're.
I know they were voting, right.
You just don't know, I mean, this can go from.
Right, I know, and I understand, you don't want to build something that you don't need, but we actually, I can't believe I'll say this, but, um, you know, we do actually have needs. I have no problem doing the projects in section three, obviously, I've sat on this board when we've done them for the past two years. And as you said, I've sat on this board as we tried to bridge our bathrooms. We need to maintain our facilities.
Well, that's, that's the thing, that's the thing, the point, is I, I think, David, you said kicked the can down the road, I, I thought the same thing at first, but actually I look at this differently now. We, we need to do, in my mind, we need to do this project, this 1 million dollar project, and we need to keep moving forward on our, on our conceptual plans for whatever referendum, what a bigger project I look on.
Right.
We need to do that anyway. I think, I think we, well, the only issue, the only question in my mind is, we don't know what that second one's going to look like. We need more information, we need more, we need a little more clarity.
Yeah, and, and, please remember, we're saying another argument now. This project, I'm saying, has no room for growth. So if there is some implicit growth, we do not have it. And David, you are correct, but this is the end of working within our article. Within our, within our footprint, right? Within our building footprint, this is the absolute end of efficiency. There's really nowhere else to go. But think about it, when I first got here, I said, look, we have problems here we can fix. Number one, let's do value, you can bang it out, right? Value can go longer, use a trap. We have it still, there are reviews for shaft, but we cannot use it for students. Then we said, I said, and I never told you, because value can be easy, it's very easy second, and the hardest is going to be late. So Riverviews this year, no student will leave the trailer next year for any purposes. And then the last year, we were going to attack the hardest one, it was the most expensive one. And, and you know, I know that the, I know the board knows that. I was okay with going off our referendum, I would have, I would have been the front man and I would have pushed that. It would have been okay, if that's what, if that's what everybody wanted to do. But I can see, I can see the problems with it right now. At first I really didn't, I felt like this is the time to capitalize. Take advantage of some of the state money, go out and do it. But there is so much uncertainty. We've been trying to hire, we've been trying, how hard have we been trying to hammer it down? And every time we do, I use something totally different, right? So even though I understand what you're saying, David, I want to make sure that I, that you understand. I agree with you a hundred percent. Our footprint now, after this, will be maxed out, number one. Number two, we should do these projects anyway. It's not like we're just doing them to do them. You know, there are some things that are going to correct some other problems in the district at the same time. And number three, we have to think a little bit about what are we going to do in the future.
I don't object to doing the projects to, because of, I don't object to doing the projects. I agree with you that they should be done. What I object to is doing them in place of, doing them as a solution to our, to our continuing discussion on substandard space, okay? It will fix the substandard space. How long would it be until we need, until we have more substandard space? When, we don't know because of the uncertainty. When does the uncertainty go away?
No, I, I, this, this solution, this solution number three, there's no room for growth. It does not give us room to light up. If we did the referendum, we would have a little bit of room for growth. Not enough that they create a new section of every class, but enough maybe for three bubbles. A bubble would be like a day grid coming through. Where we can maybe we can move stuff around and accommodate three bubbles at a time. But not enough to do by where you can just say, okay, we're going to offer, now we're going to have ten sections of every section coming through. And we can do three grades in ten sections and still have, I'm sorry, I said ten and nine. We have eight now. We couldn't do like three at nine, but we could do all of our sections at nine. All our grade levels at nine.
I, I think my, I don't disagree with you to a certain extent, we are kicking the can down the road. However, what I don't want to do is build a ten-million-dollar building. Bet ten million dollars on a referendum, build an addition on a building Riverview. When the day we open it, or before we open it, we say, oh wow, now we need another school for thirty million dollars. And I don't know what we're going to need, but I can tell you that based upon Ross Saber's report, with three hundred units, that's market and affordable, which is not astronomical considering that there's, there was a hundred built in Esseling, there's fifty at the Tocadet Station Road, sixty-five at Castor Line, and a hundred and fifty on Franklin Road. Add that all up, if you eliminate Esseling, even though it's already built, you add up the other ones, and guess what that is? Over three hundred. His estimate, if he took majority one and two-bedroom, very few three-bedrooms, his quote at the end of this report is, "Any one of these simulations, three hundred units being one of them, would probably create the need for an additional elementary school and an addition at the middle school." I don't want to go spend seven point two million dollars when we have to spend thirty-plus million dollars by the time it opens or before it. It doesn't, I just don't know what the answer is, believe me. I, I feel the same way, Dave. I wish we had an answer, but it is changing so fast and we can't get an answer as to what's happening or how it's happening or what it's going to change. I don't know what, I don't know what we need to build, but like I said, I don't want to be sitting here, yes, we're going to create substandard space again. Unfortunately, the process requires us to. It just, it's sick, believe me.
It does, and it's a terrible position to be put in. And previous boards have had this exact thing that you're worried about happen. The moment that the Lakeview addition, the whole ceiling was put on and it opened its doors, it was either at or over capacity. It predates me, that was my son's first year in the district. But due to building that happened in town that I don't know if was not known, not protected, you know, it's none of this town council, it's none of this Board of Education, you know, that was many years ago that the ceiling was put on. But they didn't expect the number of kids to come out of the buildings that came out of them, so it was above capacity. And uncertainty seems to be the name of the game as a board member because the year we went to Full Day Kindergarten, I sat as a board member and heard, if we get one, one more student in, in special ed student, we have to open up another section. And we didn't have the space, and they were looking to make deals, this predates this administration. You know, to deal with the church in the next door to Lakeview. It's like, how does that, you know, so there's always uncertainty. This is a terrible job we have. Because we know more have a crystal wall than anyone else does. But the building takes so long. I mean, looking at your dates, I mean, vote tomorrow and we won't have space for, you know, three extra classrooms. But whenever we're getting out of there, we'll be one until twenty twenty.
Yes, it's an eighteen-month project, and we'll start in some year, eighteen, nineteen.
So whatever, whatever we do, whatever we.
So when we wait a year, you know.
We can't, we can't, we still have to keep pursuing this project. We still have to figure out what this project is going to look like. We can't stop.
Well, yes, but once we, once we don't vote next month, we don't meet March, and we don't, and so it'll probably get pushed back a whole year.
Well, you could do, I just like farms, I don't know. That means it does buy it.
But April just buys this month, I don't know at all. I sat through the town council meeting, I'm not sure, you know, the moving parts aren't going to get fixed.
But just as fast.
And I don't mean fixed as in corrected, I mean, they're not going to stop moving until more than a month.
And just as quickly as it went from twenty to seventy-one, it could go back to twenty.
Right.
And just, that's sixty-five units. The next development is a hundred and fifty units, that's almost three times the size. So that could go from, what the estimates were, I think it was eighty, something like that? That could go to a hundred, two-hundred, four-hundred? I mean, we just don't know. And I, I don't, I certainly don't want to build a school and find out we have empty classrooms. I mean, that's the worst thing we can do, I think. And, and I think.
I'm pretty sure we wouldn't be allowed to build a school by the town without some really firm.
By the state, by the state is, that's the other problem too, is we have, is you can't build based upon projects that aren't approved, so.
You can, you can do it, but you don't.
With the state funding.
But you didn't know the.
Twenty-five to thirty-five percent of those costs.
Well, Steve, you can, it's one of the issues.
So I, I mean, I, it's a, it's a crappy place to be, which is a rock and hard place, but as far as I'm concerned, I, I think we have to do what we can do right now. And, you know, I think we need to continue along with, with just doing, to get out of the substandard we have now. I think everybody agrees on that, I think, ideally, so.
I agree, that we do. So I just have some questions then. I know from, you know, sitting in the town council meeting and from our discussions here, you know, all the work that we're doing to try and get as much information as possible, and we've paid to have demographers and all of that. But it seemed from sitting there that we're not getting our message out. I don't, what, I mean, as a group, do we feel like we should be doing as we're trying to make this decision to make sure that the town doesn't, we post our videos? We've been talking about this for months, months.
I even added my note, but five I did say, it's like we've been talking about.
And, and we've had, we've had meetings in smaller rooms with the administration. We sent emails offering to do most of the presentations, you know, on strategic planning and on our space issues. So far, not, not with a response, except we push the issue back. So I don't know, I'm not sure what we can say this.
At the last town council meeting, a lot of citizens from that section of town, the Castor Line Road area, came up and talked. And, you know, I don't think it's set in concrete yet, but I think you're going to see a formal citizen coalition come, come up and in opposition to the way the affordable housing is issued to be handled in town. And one of the things that came up at the meeting was, we were talking about the Castor Line Road, I think, ten units that were supposed to be affordable housing. You know, why don't we just build ten affordable housing units? And also looking at some of these, you look at the real estate sales and, and that are going on in Denble, there's a lot of housing in the mid-two hundreds up to the low three hundreds. And, you know, citizens will like the thing, the burgers who would be affordable houses. So, so legal verification, whether the town can become a general contractor, and we talk about a lot of the areas in town where there are already existing buildings and infrastructure there. So that's something that we looked into, and I think we're seeing a lot of notorious citizens are not having what's called a developer's solution, which is, you know, a special solution that comes out of track, because they've done nothing about, exhausting decision to clear it in the courts, which is really negotiations with the judge, what you're out cases for, and then the name. So a lot of uncertainty, how this is going to play out, especially with the, the other developments that are, I guess the early stages of negotiation and legal housing reform.
There's, there's no doubt in my mind that many of these developers are people that have no interest or no care as to what happens in this town or with taxpayers or anything else outside of themselves. They're, I'm on camera and in public, so I'll say they're just not good people. I can send you multiple documents that show that one of the builders is a really bad person, really, really bad person, that was indicted for bribery and fraud and bad, bad things in the town right next to us for doing exactly what he's doing in Denble right now. So they're, they're not good people, but we're not going to, we, we as a board aren't going to be able to fight that unfortunately. We, I think we need to get our word out as to what the effect is on the school district, because I agree with Mariana. Our word has not been getting out despite my best efforts as much as I can. I tried really, really hard, guys, really hard to get in front of these people. Really hard to spread the word to as many people as I can, and it seems like it's not getting through, so.
And I keep giving you kudos because you were sitting on top of this and trying to inform people as best as possible. But after sitting through, and I don't go to most of the town council meetings, but after sitting through that meeting, there's a lot of things that people don't understand. It took a long time for them to even get the, people in the audience, it felt to me, to understand that you can't just build the ten units that were being required by law, you know, that they want to build, you know, the market rate, you know, three for every, no, four for everyone, so it's a total of five for everyone. It took a long time to get that understanding out. I don't know, but I feel like, you know, to do our due diligence, I don't, how do we, you know, can we put together like a presentation when we have to come in and present to the town council publicly? So it's more on the record? This is the impact, when you, you know, fifty units that give us fifty kids equals, you know, this to the schools. Once you hit over this amount of units, it's a referendum to build a new school. You know, at this many students, it's overcrowding past where we already are. Can we put together like a, this is the impact. You build fifty units of this, you build a hundred units of this, you go three hundred units of this, it's a referendum to this much, this, you know. I don't know, and we talk to the space and nobody hears.
Well, and there's some basic information, even example of cost per pupil. I can tell you, I've talked to multiple people who I really thought knew that and told me, five thousand dollars per kid to educate a student in Denble, right? Eight thousand dollars per, per student. I, I almost fell on the floor because I sat through presentations where Steve presented the budget to them and showed them the number. And, and they have no clue. There are people in this administration, including the CFO, that think it is less than ten thousand dollars to educate a student in this district. It is embarrassing, the little amount of information that is off the bill. And I think, I agree that we need to, and Dino has offers to do it. I, I think that we might have to come in the recalcitrant session and just do it. I don't know, but, but at some point we need to get the message across. There were three council meetings in the month of September. It's an unusual month for them, they've got two regulars and a work session. I don't know why, but they actually start off with a regular, then go to a work session, then go to a regular. I don't know if it's coming out of the summer a lot, but there are three opportunities, so that may be at a viable launch, I don't know.
I just want to say that I think Mike, at the last town council meeting, you did a good job of presenting publicly to the town council and for the public that was there, what information we do know as a board and what information we gathered with our demographer. I think that you're always there, but I think for the next, I know Castor Line is going to come up again. And just like you prepare numbers, potential numbers for Castor Line using Ross Saber's numbers and kind of projecting the changes, I hope that you can do that for the next development that comes up. Just present it as you did, or like I announced, just to be presented publicly prior to, you know, having on their agenda as a presentation from the board or from the, other than that, I don't know if that's going to be there.
Yeah, because somehow we need to make the connection that it doesn't cost five thousand dollars to educate a student and certainly not eight students. And that it, you know, it has an impact. And if you build a new school, it's not just building a new school, then it's all those teachers and it's all those support staff and it's all those, you know, it's not simple. The referendum to build the building isn't the ticket price. And you need to populate the building.
And Mike, and Mike's done a tremendous job, right, for the council to the extent that he's been able to. But making that connection between what does it mean when you change your building from primarily one-bedroom to three-bedroom? What does that mean as a big deal to us? Trying to force that and all the things that follow from that. You're right, I mean, presentations is a good place to start, I think, if you discuss it several times doing it. If you were, you know, the world's silent, we're just going, you know, open comment, or we do it just in a little bit, I think we should do it.
Yeah, and I think we need like, and they often don't have a lot of people at their meetings either. But if people, the word is starting to get around that people need to become aware, then we could educate, you know, more people at once. Because we're so immersed in what it takes to run the district or the costs associated with each incremental, but others aren't. You know, I, I don't know what it takes to run the town. I don't, and I've lived here twenty-one years. But I think, you know, we're in the business of education, let's try and educate more people to actually impact.
The other thing that maybe not realize is that to float a bond, we need to go to referendum. It's been, what has it been, how many years since you last had a referendum, it's been?
Two thousand, approximately, two thousand.
Seventeen years, so, and they can float bonds whenever they want without going to referendum. They've got seven, eight-point-nine million dollars or something like that debt with a fifteen-million-dollar budget, so. It's, it's a much different ballgame for them than it is for us. So things like that, they just don't, they may not know, they just, you know.
Yeah, it's been seventeen years since we've had a referendum, so they don't realize sometimes that that's what it is.
So it made it worthwhile to talk as basic as that because that's something that we know, but they don't. I'm glad to work with Dino on kind of, and Steve on kind of figuring out a way to get, I think it's just basic information we need to get out again. I think sooner rather than later, I think that, you know, there, there's interest in this right now. And what happens is, it's, it gets a lot of interest and then it fades off and then it comes back. So I think now is a good time to kind of jump in, I think.
So I think we should do that. So one, we request that we get on the agenda of the new presentation. The other thing is, come on, we've already talked about, I think, a few good ideas there, about what that presentation should look like and some of the items that you touch on. And we get everybody's suggestions there, we pull them to something that's tight for this, you know, meaningful to them. And, you know, hopefully resonates, hopefully connects, and we start to, you know. And it may be something we have to do for presentation, and we have to wash it with an email or phone calls, but maybe take some time for this all to come together with the individual council members. Maybe that's what, that's what it will be.
I'm going to follow up email, kind of did that also, but we just continue to do those things, if I help. Steve, I just want to circle back to your comment before about our three choices or our three options as the administration sees it right now. I was a very. I was a very large supporter of the referendum. I think it's a great time to do it financially. I just, I'm gonna echo what Mike and Dino already said. I don't feel like it's kicking the can down the road and we're not taking action to fix the problem right now. The referendum would have fixed the substandard space and given us a little bit of room to grow. So, with option three, we'll fix this substandard space, and we're not, like they said, not gonna ignore the problem. We just, we don't know what our requirements are gonna be, how many students we're gonna have. And Mike might have to help me out with the details, but Denble is in, in alliance with other towns where we're the next one to be set, so, right now?
Yes, I don't know what time it meant.
Not to say that we mean, but there has been a decision by the courts that affected Southern New Jersey, and our group, Denble included, is the next group to have a decision. So, while we're taking, if we choose option three and take the year to fix our substandard space, hopefully a decision will come in that time, and that can guide us as a board to make a better educated decision about the space we're gonna be in the future.
No, it's, well, Mark, I think it's, we're riding a fine line right now because the town is in a lawsuit with the builders and with understanding what our number is. So, if we have a number of affordable units that are required from 2015 to 2025, which is the phase we're in now, then we will have an idea of multiply that out, and you can figure out how many units are gonna get built. And yes, the bedroom mixes could be different, but at least we can get an idea. We just, I mean, the estimates could be from three hundred to thirteen hundred, or seventy hundred, or whatever number we hear at the next meeting that we come to, because the number consistently changes. So, at least that'll give us a little bit better of an idea as to where the town is going and what it's gonna look like. It's, it's just frustrating right now because nobody knows.
But there's a point that, and the council made this in the last meeting. The town doesn't build that, the town is not building any of this, right? They're, they're laying the ground, they're, they're preparing the ground for this to possibly happen. But if these units don't make economic sense, they may or may not ever happen. They may or may never happen in any way that matches what the court says. So, there's, I mean, another level of potential variability to the whole town.
There is, they have to give reasonable opportunity. And the way they give the reasonable opportunity to build affordable units in town is to change zoning. So you can't zone out high density housing in town. The problem is that you have to give reasonable opportunity, I believe, reasonable opportunity if a presentation isn't presented. So, what, what, the process that happened right now is a developer looks and owns a piece of property in town and comes to the mayor and the town administrator and says, I wanna build here, and I wanna build five hundred units here. And the mayor and the town administrator look through and say, yes, no, or hey, we think a hundred units is more reasonable here, or whatever case they be. And they then pass that information to the council, the council approves it, the zoning board approves it, the planning board approves it, it goes along the process. In that process, the builders have come in and said, no, I'm gonna file a lawsuit saying I wanna build a bigger development in this property. Part of the problem, because what you'll hear is, well, yes, it has to go through a process of several approvals. However, if they agree upon a settlement agreement, the settlement agreement has the amount of units, the breakdown of how many bedrooms in each unit, the, I mean, everything in there. So, yes, it's gotta go through zoning, yes, it's gotta go through planning, but it's approved, yes. I mean, it's, it's a legal agreement that they're approving. It would be like us, you know, approving something and saying, well, Steve still has to approve it. Yes, but if we say to do this, Steve, Steve's gonna have to do it. And, and probably even worse, because it's a legal agreement. If we have a legal document saying that we're gonna have a settlement with somebody, they'd have to follow it. So, it, it's, it's ugly, it's messy, there's a lot of different opinions on which way to go. Steve sent a really interesting article about two towns in Bourbon County that I'm looking at on the show. Yeah, just right now.
But it's really, it's really just a referendum, see which way the public wants you to build, but they're uninformed public in most part.
Yes.
And they're gonna vote, all vote, don't have any to do with it.
Steve, is there, we joined this group, and it sounds like this group is similar to the Bourbon State Coalition.
Right.
Can we, have we asked them about what their take on this is, what their stance is? Because what we hear from the town council is, go to your state legislator. So, I mean, they have an ability to go and, and fight it. I mean, I know our town council says, it's the Democrats, they're screwing this whole thing up. I mean, that's literally what they said at the last meeting, every single one of them. So, I, I mean, I don't know, I could reach out to them. And, and listen, I think it's perfectly reasonable, if you guys think it's appropriate, to reach out. I haven't done it, and I, I've been thinking about doing it, to reach out to Senator Bucow, Assemblyman Bucow, Assemblyman Carroll, and, and our legislators and say, hey, as a board event member, understand what this means to us. I think it's perfectly acceptable and appropriate if you guys want to reach out to them and, and push, because I think we need to push everything that we can. And, you know, see what, what we can, it was, I, I just wanna make sure they understand the impact. Instead of, you know, it was surprising to me, if not shocking, as you guys probably all saw from my email, that, that meeting went from half one and two bedroom to three bedroom units. And, and I think it was shocking to some council people when they came across all the agenda of that, because, but I think the problem is, is that when the council and the town administration is going to the attorney that's representing them, they're not telling them, because that attorney's doing the negotiation. They're not telling them one of the important things is keeping it to one and two bedrooms, because that's really important for the school system, and therefore the cost of the taxpayers. So, that's the message I'm trying to get across to them, is let's get in here and negotiate to tell the attorney, Mr. Boozak, that that's important in the negotiation as much as how many units are going in. It's important to represent how many three bedrooms there are, because that's a significant effect on the school issue, so. Sorry, guys, I'm gonna chew your ear off, but.
And as a point of clarity, and those of you who have done the legal training more recently, and have had some changes, you brought up reaching out to your, our legislative representatives. I know, and, you know, Dr. is frequently, he's very good, I'm making sure he reaches out. You can, as a citizen, reach out, and I, I'm not, the reason I said that you're illegal, there used to be a point in time when you couldn't mention it, and then there was a point in time where you have to mention I'm a board member when I'm speaking as a citizen. If you wanted to be like from the board, I believe Dino can write that letter, because he, by our bylaws, speaks for the board. I don't know if we, you know, need to have all boards sign off on it, but here tonight, say, yes, we'd like you to do that. It doesn't matter who drafts the letter, but I think, you know, if you wanted to come, I believe, if you wanted to come from the board as, this is the impact of the schools, are you aware, blah, blah, blah. I think it has a good thought.
I thought.
I think the more letters, the better.
Oh, right, I think the more contact. I mean, I think we can send a letter to the board if everyone's agreed to that, and I think that's great. And then I think as individuals, there's no reason.
Well, as individuals, we absolutely can, but I'm just, I guess I think we can still talk about that.
I think you can say, this is my personal representation, but you can still mention that your board of education never happened.
Well, there's something you have to be sure, like you said.
I'll double check and let everybody.
Don may actually know, because in my time on the board, it was one way. I believe now you have to say you're a board member speaking as a citizen.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, stepping backwards a little bit. The most recent one, Dino, you spoke about, Dino and Mike, you both spoke about presenting something to the town council. I think that it's probably a very important thing that everybody be there, and we do whatever is necessary legally so that we can be there as a group and sit down in front and have all of us there, it will have a much stronger impact than if it's just one or two people standing up and talking. I know that there were five of us, I was not one of them, that was five?
Yeah, but we sat on the corners.
And it was spread around the room.
Can we talk about that? What, what, because like you said, there were five of us, I mean, we're spread around the room. What are we supposed to do legally? And, you know, we're the department, we're not there for school related business, but we kind of are.
But instead of public forum, that is your meeting.
No, we didn't announce it.
No, we didn't tell anybody.
But we weren't discussing, we as the five of us, we're not discussing school money.
No, we weren't. I, but the we as the five of us weren't having a discussion, but.
My, my point is, is that when we.
Steve, we're five now.
Even when we do this, I think we need to do whatever is legally necessary for all seven of us. And I'm assuming you'll be there, Steve, and whoever else from the administration is, does this as a group, because I believe it will have much more impact to show the town council, hey, we all care about this strongly. Stepping back a lot further, am I correct, Steve, that there's three quarters of a million in the budget this year for the substandard space issue, or was that last year?
That's this year.
Okay. If we go with option three, is that three quarters of a million going towards that? Or do you plan on taking that out of building reserve, I'm sorry, maintenance reserve?
Well, the seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand, right now the budget, the budget that I worked out with our architect, of those projects that I listed, is nine hundred thousand. It may come in at seven hundred and fifty thousand, we have to be prepared to that.
No, I understand, but the, the three quarter, the three quarters million that is currently in the budget.
Goes towards that.
Will go towards, towards that option three.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
It says Mike Pacheco Carroll is in the building tomorrow.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna say, I think our town council is probably in the. They're like, at eight fifty, I can go down there and pick them over. They're helping the county, the public.
Did you want to wipe the seven million with the slip here, or you really wanna have it get this out?
Steve, with the, the three options, if we choose option one and we still have what we have in reserve, can we possibly look at doing part of the group so that when that large group project needs to be done, we can break it up? Because if we have another large expense, like an addition or a rebuilding, we also have to add a group.
Option one to the small addition, maybe four point five million.
No, I'm saying, let's say we choose to do option three.
Okay, option three.
Right, so we use, like David was saying, we use the seven fifty that we already have in the budget. We take out some from reserve to complete, to get to the money. We still have money in reserve. And, and I don't know when it would be beneficial to do group. We don't wanna do it too early, but I'm saying, can we break it up into stages so that we don't have this huge one point five million dollar project on top of an addition or a rebuilding or whatever comes down to it?
Yes, you could, but our architect didn't recommend doing anything early. So maybe, maybe, he said, prepare and do it in three years. So maybe in the third year, maybe half, if it's really bad, do that, and the next year do it. Stage two. It'd be great to get out of that cycle at one point.
That's a good point, especially with women.
It's gonna be a forty year warranty.
I can't really.
Only hook is fifteen year warranty, that's a lot of time, but that's, 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 that's already gone, that's whatever. All right. Okay, all right. Are we, are we about?
Ready to start the meeting?
Are we about ready to start our meeting? Fourth, have you got your comments ready?
Yes, I do. So, we talked about the Russ Saber report, I'm gonna talk about that again, I think we all do. Our HIB presentation, I presented in July. I wanna make sure I have a clarification, that we reported an inaccurate number of violence. The accurate number of violence in twenty sixteen, seventeen was two instances. In fifteen, sixteen, it was four instances, and fourteen, fifteen, it was three instances. The reason that happened was because we, the state classifies all HIV as violence too. We can't show it as both, because it, it doesn't look right. So, our numbers now, HIV in twenty sixteen, seventeen, was twelve confirmed instances. Instances. In fifteen, sixteen was five, and fourteen, fifteen was five. In weapons and substance abuse, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, there were five instances. There was zero in the other two.
There are two different ways you can find.
So, that, there's, you know, the board has been updating on all five instances with the weapon, weapon substance abuse. There was an odd year for that, and we're obviously really diligent on making sure that none of this stuff happens in schools. And then, we do, we did see us fighting HIV confirmed instances from five to twelve. And it is going to be something we're gonna address this year. We have, we have some things on the agenda tonight, actually, for approval, to bring out some speakers, people like that to help with training the parents of the students and the staff as well on HIV prevention. Upcoming events, complications, September fifth. If you have not already confirmed that you're coming, please do so by Wednesday. I need to give, I need to give MoneyWell a list of our staff, or anybody who's coming, because they're, they have to have security, there's security clearance as well, so if you're coming and you didn't tell me, please let me know. Orientation for, at Lakeview is August twenty ninth, Irvingview is August thirtieth, and Valleyview is also August thirtieth. Back to school nights, our Irvingview, the thirteenth of September, Valleyview is the fourteenth of September, and Lakeview is the nineteenth of September. We're very, very pleased to announce that all three schools will receive the bronze sustainable jersey certificate, certification. So that's a pretty good accomplishment. It's official now, and there will be sometime a, a public press release from, from sustainable jersey sometime September. It's official that we have received it. We, we would like to continue with the program, look at district bronze certification. So we have the three schools, we have to get the district one bronze certification. All right, so getting back to the town hall office move. The town hall office move, I, I spent a lot of time on this. We had, we, we didn't have a great estimate for costs. So, our architect gave us an estimated cost of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, including like moving and all that other stuff. So we can only appropriate a hundred to fifty-five thousand for the town. Our, our bids came in, the lowest bid was two thirty-three. And when we went to the middlesex regional, who does it without bidding, it's interesting what I did with it, it came in at approximately two hundred and twenty thousand. So we're about seventy thousand dollars over what we thought. So, my recommendation now, and I, I spoke to our architect, guys, can you, can you give me a little background? So I'm sure the board is gonna wanna know, why are we so far off? The, the biggest portion of the, of this project in terms of cost is the HVAC. Because we're moving into a building that has a very specific HVAC system, it's gonna have to totally be configured in that area. That, the cost alone for the HVAC is upwards of sixty thousand dollars, maybe changes that are already required for us to move in. So, we're, like I said, we're about seventy thousand dollars off. But at the same time, we're paying almost fifty thousand dollars a year rent. So, my recommendation, after discussing this with, with the mayor's and our architect, and the construction we're editing, and the contractor, and Steve Ward, is to re-appropriate two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and move on. Now, obviously, that's, that's a substantial increase, but remember, every time we're in there, or for the form which we are, it's fifty thousand dollars a year. I wish we had better, accurate budgeting numbers, but I can't go back and change that. And we are working with newer architects, this is our former architects. So we've already moved on to a different architect. So, this is where we're at. We're, we're invested and continue to move forward. We, nobody really feels like if you go out to bid again, it's gonna get, it's gonna be any better, because all the numbers are pretty close. It's not like you have, you know, six hundred thousand and, you know, a couple around three hundred thousand. They're all come in pretty close to the number. Including the guy who actually comes in and he breaks down every single thing, because when they do it through the co-op, every possible process is actually listed. It's a fifty page document. It says like, how many hours of mason, how many hours to use a truck and have a truck driver. It has all these different things listed. Obviously, I would much rather it be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but it's not gonna be a hundred and seventy thousand. And I still feel like we should move forward. We do not need to decide tonight, but we do need to decide unless, unless we wanna keep putting it off. I mean, I'm just saying, we wanna try to get back into a decent timeframe. The town requires at least two months to make these changes, because they have to, they have to advertise ordinance. The town requires at least two months to make these changes, because they have to, they have to advertise the ordinance. Next one, they have to vote on the ordinance, and it takes about twenty-one days for the ordinance to become official. So you're already looking at a minimum of a two month delay on top of this. Remember, we're also bound by rules of working in the building, and we've already agreed that we would not work in March. From March to June, because of their, their increased volume there building. So the only way we can get, just get this thing back on track is to appropriate more money and start another project.
What do you mean, we can't work up there from March to June?
We agreed that we would not have construction done up in, in the, it's the construction official's office. And that says Adam, I'm here. But all the other compensation we had, they never existed. So that's where we're at.
All right, any questions?
Yes, we're, we're month to month right now.
Yes. We could say, like, we could, we could, I mean, if that's easier. Problem is, you know, we've already spent about twenty-five thousand dollars on, uh, you know, fees and all the engineering that we've done. So it's, it's at the point where we'd have to either cut and run or continue moving the project. Just remember, it's a twenty-five year lease, and even with the increase, the first five years, it's paid off in your free for twenty years. So, you know, it's a positive thing too.
Okay, so.
That's that.
All right. All right, thank you. Dr. Phelps?
We have received the two thousand sixteen seventeen student park reports. We will be mailing them home on Monday, September eleventh. So look in the mail for them after that date.
What's this?
Right, thank you. Under Maris, I think from you, it's a, it's a, this is not straight.
I think it's, I look on. Uh, the only thing that I just wanted to point out on tonight's agenda, you were improving an increase in stadium. In the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and five dollars, if I'm correct. This is an additional stadium that it was appropriated and improved in the launch of this past college year.
My stuff was mainly approved before.
No, it is under the agenda on the finance. Number four on the finance.
There's.
We approved the stadium, but we have to improve also the appropriation.
Oh, so this is, yeah, okay, so this is, okay, this is a follow-up. And that comes to, that comes to about twenty-two dollars a student?
Sixty dollars a student.
Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, we sold about half the money short than we're supposed to.
Yeah, that's a question, that is a whole lot.
I forgot to remind everybody, tomorrow morning, seven thirty is the technology conference conference. Technology meeting, I need L T D, you gotta attend today. And on the agenda is the new, we don't have, what, I say more reviews, but go to me. So it's a different call.
Yeah, I know.
Yep, so it's all the info, how to, how to, uh, call. Yeah, you know, like, you type, you know.
Tell it to the city, not the county.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, uh, we'll open up for a couple of comments at eight fifty-four P M. Don't be shy to do anything, say, don't fret, we're, we're a friendly group. Stay in line, um, we'll close the public, the first public guest comment section at eight fifty-four P M. And let's move on to business. Mr. Anderson, do you bear to answer through our, with the side of the slide?
Sure, there are objections, I'd like to move A, B, and C as a log, including our way of reports for June, July, two thousand seventeen, our education reports, district goal, board goals, as well as work session, regular meeting, executive session, blah, blah. Second.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Um, so I think we may want, my suggestion would be maybe change some of the board, some of the board goals. We will think, we will, like, yeah. I think, I can show you what I'm saying. Actually, that wasn't very clear. Maybe instead of to have committee meetings available, um, Minnesota would distribute committee meeting minutes to all board members within one week of the committee meeting. Um, and the, uh, we're planning to adopt the board retreat rather than to have a board retreat, just in the week. What's the word you want? All right, um, so for, for, um, two, we'd say distribute committee meeting minutes to all board members.
Distribute.
No, distribute, just distribute. Yeah, distribute committee meeting minutes to all board members within one week of the committee meeting.
All board members within one week.
Right. And then the other one, instead of to have a board meeting, a board retreat would be, uh. Right.
Plan it to dot.
Plan it to dot, they, we're, actually, you have. Right, we say, we'd be, plan it to dot, board retreat.
I agree to that, Fred, even though the board gives certain.
Yes, I agree. Okay. Okay, have you, anyone else, anything else, questions, comments? Everybody's okay with the, with the changes? All right, go, always.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, I need to abstain on the executive session minutes for July tenth, as I was conflicted and not there for the entire executive session.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wathner?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes. Okay, moving on personnel. If there are no objections, I'd like to move items one through seven on the original agenda. Yeah, I'm gonna go over that. Uh, on the original agenda, with the addition of, on here, one N, N through S S. On here, two, additions of B through G, with the addition of, and eight off the amendment. And we're gonna, let's go through this slowly. Um, under item one, we are removing C for, uh, Ophelia Rodriguez. We're also going to be removing, uh, Ophelia Rodriguez under X, also under one, and Y, under one. So that she's coming out in those three places. So, do, if, if that is where everyone can ask, second?
Okay.
Mr. Ross? Do you have, do you have, uh, the, the amendment, the amendment?
Yeah, I was glad to see number eight, because I was gonna ask if that we had put the, down, we were linking the comments. I'm sorry, I had a question anyhow. I was gonna say, yes, he did move the agenda, because I was glad to see number eight, which is the venue where it's at early, because I was wondering where one of you was when we had A view and value on, on our agenda. Can you give us some examples of, what, I understand how it ties into our district goals, but can you give us some examples of what venue we're doing? I mean, I assume this is after their, their school? Or is this during their school day, they're coming in to do our school? What are the Morris Falls High School student mentors doing at their school?
Those, those students, I believe, are part of the, it was a revolutionary, wow. For, this is part of the, um, in a program they send the kids down here for, for, uh, to experience the classroom. You've been through this for years. It's, it's the, where the kids come from Morris Falls to work with our kids in the classroom, because they're in that class, head one-on-one, or careers in H, or they also could be in another class there. It's, it's like a, it's a G and T program, where the kids would have a teaching, they would have a teaching.
And then do we use, not call it mentoring, we use to call it observation or something?
Something like that, yeah.
So they're not really mentoring anybody, they're gonna come in and observe?
No, they're really working like as a, like, it's almost like a student teacher.
Yeah.
Well, then can we have to say that?
Yeah.
I don't mind if we wish, if we were sitting that way, I just don't feel it, because I think that's the reason why I thought of it. I just don't, um, do you share your demands? I know, I know I just don't think come through, but I don't remember if that's the reason. I'm assuming that's what it is, because it's, uh.
It's not special.
It's, it was so menitive, then.
That's a lot, I mean, we're not gonna start before our next meeting. Our next meeting is.
Might start during the school year.
Don't know if I can, kind of, say anything to the law. So we'll start that early with, with our school year.
Yep. And I think you're wrong, maybe it, it is a menitive, I, I just don't recall.
Well, it's just, and you, it got tied to the goal, develop a shared responsibility beyond the classroom as a community, including peers, mentors, and family. So, I mean, that's not student teaching or student conservation, or when it's tied to one C. I'd like to understand what it is, and I don't know.
So, let's, let's call it.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I, just like, I understand what it would be.
Have we had a segment for this year?
Yes.
Yeah, we could have a discussion on that.
That's why we're discussing.
So if we, just to explain that, maybe we could just, if we can, or if we, if we table, we could pull it back, what, what, who, who, who?
If you table it, she wouldn't think it came right back on. If you remove it. If you remove it.
That's what I thought. You did wind it off, I was like, we didn't set a table and shit.
I would have to do the whole time.
How do you look? It's hard to keep that in your back pocket. Just quickly, I guess put that on.
Well, we're moving to keep hold too, yeah.
So, I, I'm, I'm late calling it until we understand what it is.
So then we're gonna amend what you're moving?
Yes. So I would like to amend what I moved to.
Go in three and four. Three, four, and eight. Three is the same thing about you, four is the same thing in.
Three, four.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so I will amend what I'm moving to.
We've been admitting.
To the items. One, two, five.
One to the entire staff.
So he's moving one, two.
Oh, alright, sorry.
He's moving one, two, and five.
Alright, so I am, I am amending what I'm moving to include. One, two, five, six, and seven.
So, another way, we're gonna go back four stalls, hold. Right on the list. Yup.
You're talking about three, four, and eight.
We're gonna have four stalls, we're gonna have one.
We're trying to find out what it is.
It's like, you know, what it is.
And we potentially, we would have a next meeting. This is what I was thinking.
But we're tabling it by pulling it.
We're not, we're not table, we're pulling, we're pulling.
No, no, we
So, look, I have
I'm assuming the same thing to see this. I think the only thing we ever have to come for is to do their observation. They don't even come.
Right, but it's odd the way it's worded, the way it's tied to our district goals and when we don't understand what we're voting on, what do you vote?
It was talking, we went with the title. It's ways worded, I understand. I'm sure critical instead of paper, so all of them, we started. Those three? Or should I clarify?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll run through that again.
I just want to make sure.
Well, I, to be clear, that's fine. So, we're moving one, two, five, six, and seven. And the amended items from, from our agenda. One, N through SS. Two, B through G, and we're striking.
And we're striking?
Striking.
And we're striking, right, C, Ophelia Rodriguez, and then we're striking Ophelia Rodriguez on X, and we're striking Ophelia Rodriguez on Y. All right.
Yeah, alright, go back.
I don't need a question.
Our secretary must have just worded it. It's complete their mentorship program, it's not mentorship art. They're, they're working on the system with
Which is what I asked to be given, let's just check.
That's what I thought it was, but I don't know why we wrote it mentorship. So, it's not mentorship, it's working with, it's working basically like a student teacher.
Which we approve all the time.
Okay.
So what is the wording on the
So change the wording to, from student to mentor to, um, what do you call it?
Mentorship.
Yeah, for their, their mentorship program over there at Morris Falls.
Well, they don't do that, they just have to, they just have to close to observe.
You could say, yeah, to observe.
To observe.
To observe.
It's intuitive, each other.
It's observed.
Are we keeping, are we keeping the nine and one C to the goal?
Yes. It's, it's expanding ourselves as a community.
Are we going to be saying the entire decisions or?
I would love that.
Alright, how about just change the word from student, from student to mentor, to student to observe?
Yeah. The only word is changing.
To observe.
Yes.
And let's go back.
You'll all be happy when it's done.
Rewind.
My phone, my phone keeps like, oh, yeah.
It looks screwed.
Before we go any further, I'm having my phone off. Okay, so, I will amend what I'm moving again.
Back to my original.
Yes, to include items one through seven from our original agenda. Item eight from our agenda. Items one, N, N through SS. Items two, B through G. We are going to be striking one C, Ophelia Rodriguez. We're also striking Ophelia Rodriguez off of one X, and Ophelia Rodriguez off of one Y. Do I have a second? And we're changing, and we're changing two, uh, three to read the following Morris Falls High School students to observe at Valley Middle School. Four, also to say students to observe. And eight, we'll say Morris Falls High School students to observe at Valley Middle School. Alright, Donna, are you, are you all okay with that?
Yeah, we're good.
Alright. I hope we got that straight. Any other, any other questions or comments on any, any other of these items?
I, I just wanted to make one comment on observation. So, I appreciate getting candid profiles because it is really nice to see that, I think on one of the, we had eight hundred and eighty applicants. So it shows that hopefully we're a district where students, our teachers want to come to. Uh, I know, obviously, those vary because other ones had significantly less depending on the specialty or the subject, but uh, general headteachers, we seem to get a big drop for, so I'm glad to see we have a big pool picked up and hopefully get the best of the best.
Alright, everybody's okay? Ball, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Luna?
Yes.
Mrs. Maddie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lathan?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to the starting programming. Just a little.
I'd like to move section B as a block. We have field trip requests, we have rhyme story programs, we have a, uh, I'm sorry, I haven't pronounced that.
Yahal Bakar.
Yahal Bakar, presentation on odds of choices and drugs and alcohol, revised social studies curriculum for grades five through eight, uh, the revised part of writing curriculum, and the Julia Cook credit to give multiple presentation for student staff and parents.
I'll second.
Julia Cook is, she's an author and a counselor who travels around the country discussing with parents and staff and students different social and emotional issues. So everything from like kindergartners, uh, tattletales, like tattletales to bullying, uh, moving up through the older grades, talking about how to take feedback, um, how to accept the mother's depression. She's had a whole variety, she's had like forty seven groups. So she came last year, uh, and we just hope, hope like they've been working with us again. On this, they did, helped lead her to come last year, but it did not include a parent or staff presentation, just students. And, and so this year, she's coming back for two days and then having a night presentation as well as a staff presentation, night presentation with parents on October nineteenth. In addition, you see that we also have rhyme story, which is a discussion about, um, bullying, bullying, as well as those into adolescent depression and suicide. Uh, so that's also for our fifth through eighth grade students and parents.
So that, on that day, so to imagine where we want to really publicize this, we will do the two fifth, the two fifth grade schools, all the classes come together late in the most likely to a presentation, then move to Valley before the afternoon, then at night, most likely at Valley. We'll work out the details, make sure the weight to where, we'll have a parent presentation. This is a gentleman that tours all over the country. His son committed suicide about ten years ago from being cyber bullying, and, uh, and he's a very moving speaker. If you can see him, you should see him. I've seen him before. We had, had him in that book before, it was at Morris Falls about five years ago, um, and he's been all around basically the East Coast. Uh, if you get a chance to go, it's a really, it's a really moving speaker and, and I think it's gonna be valuable for our.
We have a very nice line up this year. It'll all be handed out at the beginning and back to school, like our parent academy students as offerings. These are two of them, and, um, working with C P A and working with quite a good list of options for this year.
I'd also like to say, um, it was a privilege to have one of our staff members come in to the curriculum committee meeting, meeting to talk to us about the social studies curriculum we write. It's fabulous work, just like it was done on our writing curriculum, but it was truly nice to see the excitement about the changes and the ways we're gonna reach the students and the new things, some of which were piloting. It was, it was truly, I always enjoy my curriculum meetings, but it was, it was wonderful, um, to have her there and see the true excitement and joy in what she does. So thank you for bringing her in.
I have a note from Lady Curly, that was a sixth grade content, it was very complex, it was pure bad.
Previously.
Right.
The teachers, so as we were going through in our process, we targeted all of our teachers and then we kind of narrowed down who's one of our authors of teaching. But what, in our discussions, all of the sixth grade teachers and teachers felt that it was not rich enough in content and it was underlying closely enough in the standards to be at the level where students should be reading. So that the text was, was probably a little bit lower in reading ability as well as the content was, you know, they needed to up the detail, up the, the standard. So they bought, they, you know, they selected and adopted and purchased a book that is a little more rich in content. It does come with the online text. I mean, the textbook is a very big thing, but it does have a, every student has a online text. In classroom they have the heavy, you know, the actual part text, as well as just a whole host of online tools.
I would say that was a wonder, she pulled out those books, those are some, she needed a cart to bring them in because they were so large and so heavy. So I'm glad they're in the classroom sets.
Online and, uh, just in the class.
Yeah, I have a question about this, um, addressing religions as part of the strategic, um, how is world religions are addressed today? How, how do you have them, is this a deeper dive? Or is it, what else is there?
Oh, so you probably know, we did discuss it. You probably, you probably, you should, I was gonna say, it used to be done separate from the rest of, it was a unit on religions. So this is
The way it's presented now, uh, to how it was in the past, it was more of a, in and of itself, uh, as opposed to each world civilization, then it brings in what their predominant religion is.
The rest of the
history of what, how it's developed in that area. But it's really a stable piece of, we do that particular civilization, as opposed to, it's not really a study of religions. We don't really do a whole book compare. It is study, it's more
This is the range of this.
It's not religion, it's not religion as a standalone side note so much, it's more integrated into, the reason I asked
It's totally
It used to be a side note.
The reason I asked is, right, so much of what we talked about strategic plans, those developing is that we won't set us in what I understood the world, the reality of the world works, and exploring. To me, it seems to be a world that's a way of portraying.
And everything is common, even the world civilization, everything is tied to the constitution. So it talks about, like, why we have things that we have today based on what is a great, what this ancient civilization, what their, if they were democracy, or what kind of government that they had, and how that has led to what we have. And then seventh, eighth grade will be us, so that's clearly everything is tied to the constitution. But I like how now we go from our fifth grade, which is just world regions, so it's current governments that are moving up through, we're leaning all the way, and, and continually tying it back to our own government, which I think is really important and really addressed exactly what came out of strategic plan. Understanding why we do the things we do. I think it's one thing you really have
It was really nice that we were working on this right now and it tied in so well with what the community was looking for.
I think everyone really thinks we're very hard on this. Yeah, it was, it was a two-year process, but I think our, our product is really, really good. Thanks again to Jen, she really is the author of
Um, one quick thing, I, I know we just approved our work goals, although, although it doesn't include to increase attendance at more reading school events or whatnot, I would just ask you, as some of these presentations come out, if appropriate, for a couple more of them, you should sit in the back and listen. I, I know we all can't make them because of scheduling and the turn of the day, but if it's appropriate, please include invites for us, 'cause if able, I don't like for instance, the one, uh, you said rhyme story has an eating program, that's fine, but the ones who don't have an eating program for the turn of the day, we can sit in the back and put them in.
I'll try to keep it on the fourth.
Yep. Thank you.
Ball, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Luna?
Yes.
Mrs. Maddie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lathan?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes. So another policy, um, this is something, I can't believe.
No, I don't like it. I'd like to move, uh, regulation nine two zero two, safety and stability for site reading and adoption.
Second.
We didn't accept this though.
I just moved it, I remade, and I did that I had going to stay on the vote because I didn't read it before tonight's meeting.
I'm not certain I ever read it. When, when, when was it?
Well, first reading was last month, so, but we knew we weren't voting on it, so I'm pretty sure I didn't do it then and.
It's, um, yeah, it's in our board packet.
Oh, it's there, not this month, last
Which? July tenth, board packet, uh, nine two, nine two oh two, safety and stability.
Person, person, revisions are attorney requesting.
I'm gonna read it last month, but I have no revision.
You got, you want, you want the red line?
Full screen.
Yeah, that's what I got.
These are all changes are, are attorney requesting. When I showed our policy, um, add the reason, the reason we add, the thing that started change was So if you look at number three, it's part of the talics. If you look at the first section, part three, that's the, that's the new line to trigger the change. So when we, this came out a while ago. We talked about it in the committee, and we said we should add that to the policy. So when I did that, I wanted to assure that the policy was legit with the lawyer, so the lawyer reviewed it and made some other suggestions, so, um, basically, basically it says, if anybody is banned from the school premises, the police will be notified. Any banned person will be considered a trespasser if they attempt to re-enter the premises or off campus while the ban is on, or if it's off campus, that will have a ban effect. So the other things are basically word, just some wording changes, that was the main change. The other things were things that she called her court legally to make the change.
The original version that was sent out, uh, in the July tenth packet, is the version that we're voting on.
Correct.
I assume it's, it's either, it had to be red line.
Well, it's, it's, I would, it's the way that we look at it, it's what we've got.
Yeah, no, I, I know how. That's, I did actually look at it, I just had no relation.
So we only have the one month.
Yeah, I certainly
We have two.
No.
So when we get a red line, should we put three bodies, so we know where to place red line? Because I see like several red lines on this thing. Just for the point, like, when you just, if you have more than one, you just date the red lines, you know, the red line?
Like, in other words, the bottom Usually, we always have the approval date, which is, but yeah, we could, but
But nobody, I don't think anybody asked for any changes last month.
No.
So there are no revisions from the last time we said that. My guess is what we clarified.
Yeah, but I guess part of your point is, if you want, this is a second revision, you could maybe know that.
Oh, so it was two times.
The board, the board did not ask for any revisions, this is all
No, I don't recall any. We moved the whole agenda as a block last month, we could not have any discussion on this item.
Alright, so the, the revision date is the date that we voted on. So also the latest red line isn't shared, welcome.
Alright, so is, is everybody comfortable with this in this current state? And comfortable with their knowledge of it?
You guys ready? I was ready to turn some of it. Didn't I get
Alright, if there's others, discussion, ball, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Alana?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I almost asked, thank you for taking the time to pull it out so I could see what I actually read.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Since I actually read it just now, yes, I will guess I
Mrs. Lathan?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes. Moving on to finance, Mrs. Alana, I would ask you to list the other items planned.
Sure, there's no objection. Um, I'd like to move under letter A finance on the agenda, uh, as a block, items one through twelve.
I think it went D, but
D.
You said it.
A.
Letter D finance, items one through twelve. So we have the, the, uh, public attendance, we have, um, approved theater group, five, five video services. We have not the annual public reception of technicals, care for the evening. We have, um, the increased C E to Mary so much earlier. Um, uh, this asset tax for expulsion from rally groups, uh, our bill of resolution, this is, I don't know, favorite resolution. And, uh, number seven is the confidence in maintenance planning. Number eight, or the title, uh, the no title behind title, one, two, three times.
What?
Number nine is still a little, um, tax code. Uh, six grade. Number eleven, donation of a new sound system from Valley Middle School, cost eighteen thousand dollars. And then especially an approval, Y D C S, so at the market center, and a celebration.
We'll share.
I got a question about the asset tags. The, the list that we got in the packet
Made it as clear as one.
Was, uh, just a list of the numbers, wasn't it? What do these asset tags actually refer to?
We're gonna pull it because we're gonna ask for it.
Just to add some clarification, so, I mean, at least what I'd like to see on that is the
Just to add some clarification, so, I mean, at least what I'd like to see on that is the description of what it is, and what we quoted it? Just to make sure we're not throwing out like, uh, I mean, not that I think we are, but...
I guess it is possible to throw on some of those, kind of do.
It is, there was a contributor, someone on the, on the previous asset list that I asked the members about, but there's a reasoning behind it, but, you know, in general, throwing out a hundred computers every block, a year ago, that would be a, a red flag.
There's the date, there's the numbers assigned, so, I mean, I don't want to go over extra work, just trying to figure out. So it's only amended the block, the room, uh, per last year. So it's not sure of clarification of what we're, we said from the number, so this question.
Just for clarification, the, um, cream of old and dairy actually goes to cents, uh, thousands of cent, uh, of a cent for the price of, they could just round those with that. Play on the asset.
We're just gonna pull the number that we're tied at, I think.
Yeah. Nine, ten for the cent. Got it, we play it pretty different, I see. And we charge the same amount, or what kind of money is that?
Um, it was kind of weird when we...
No, but I'm saying, like, within the type of notes, if that's free, the ones that, which are same, yeah, it's only, it's literally a cent difference, I'm sorry.
A cent plus.
Point, yeah.
One cent and eight, one point out.
Seven nine.
One point seven nine cents.
How do you spell one hundred ninety six, uh, to go somewhere? They gave somebody, you get, yeah, you...
You don't have a note, you have a really, yes. Something here is on the screen.
Uh, number twelve, the four students, is that what we get, what we expected going to school here?
Yeah, those are recovered.
I see, did we have for the, for the value of it, those are already, were replacing expenses and wizard presentation, is this getting currently mounted? Cause I know in the other schools, it's like the screen comes down and we build in projector, and, you know, this is gonna be a little bit, kind of...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be as good as it can be without getting broken, so, they, they play basketball, they do all kinds of stuff, and I think, the, the plan right now is gonna go a rear projection system.
Okay.
So we set a high string.
Yeah.
A new string, a good new voice system, and the, uh, PTA is okay for, uh, you know, for... Everybody's here? Go, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
The law number six, yes, number S. Number six is the, uh, the milk, where the government stipulated the parents, but it should have the lunch, and not go forward.
Mrs. Lina?
Yeah.
Mrs. Nancy?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
On motion number one, I will abstain on check number three, two, eight, two. I will be like Mr. Cass, I will vote no on number six, and I will abstain on motion twelve, and I will vote yes on the rest.
And I, if you are here, will be yes, you will be abstaining on number one, checking on the group to H, uh, the sixth is enough, abstaining on twelve, I guess, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Lor?
Um, yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes. I was gonna say, yeah, I have anything. Alright, moving on down. Moving on down to rations, Mr. Cass, here are the listed items tonight.
Yep, on transportation, I'd like to move the use of two of our district buses with Mr. Rogers for reunification drill for the demo public schools, Morris County VOTAC, and Dental Police Department on September twenty third.
This is my demo, Mr. Cass.
Number two of these, uh, back, yeah, and number two, that we authorize this district visitor to self-disclose of the following option, non-motion district school bus, bus number one seventy two. And by the way, the, uh, that would be a freight matter bus, not a freight matter?
It's a big, uh, it's a big one.
There's a team, there's a team, it's together for the same thing, or thing.
Ah, yes, it is, please.
This is not a real freight, freight, freight liner, it's a, uh, it's a chief person, it's a container.
It's American.
Hey, you want me to do two? Sorry.
Do you wanna, yeah. Want to move down, do you want to move transportation to the same point as well?
I didn't ask mine, everybody was shocked. Off the police grounds. Um, first item is to approve the submission to the Morris County Superior Schools, approve the dual use of educational space, and change the use of educational space, and for renewal of temporary instructional space for the upcoming school year. Um, academy school, change the use of A twenty nine, smaller construction, use of preschool classroom. Dual use of B zero seven, or restorative, smaller construction, dual use of B ten, external music instruction, storage, and temporary instructional space to temporary classroom units. Revol C one for music, and L C two for music parks, every review, dual use of route twenty two, speech and occupational therapy. And item number two is to award cash landscape and design, ongoing services for landscaping our schools, they've done a great job over the years, I can see they had competitive data coming back to do that.
Moving down here, I'm gonna tell you again, on the event, on the event. Three and four.
Item number three, approve contract, make services for repairs needed for the dramatic, unit medical waivers, due to forty, amount of twenty three thousand, a hundred eighty three dollars, for the upcoming school year. And item number four, approve the submission to the Morris County Superior Schools, waiver for program facilities for early intervention, pre-k, for the art classroom, for the upcoming school year. The goal is to comply with the course, N G A C, six eight, twenty six, six dot three.
I'll say it.
Can I ask, does the toilet not have a safety? What piece of the toilet room not have?
I like, this is the word, uh, safety, this is bad, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, in transportation, one, does this mean we are no longer going to be doing, we are no longer planning for reunification at county college, or are we gonna be doing it at the VOTAC now?
No, this is actually helping the VOTAC, in, in cooperation, our news department, and our Florida head, who is drilled with the VOTAC, up to, up to the CCM.
Got it.
That's probably your concern, is how the buses are going.
The word, our people, some of our staff will be there to help, to help that and also learn, and see how it goes.
Well, I'm happy to see us working with VOTAC, since they don't have their own buses, and since all the town's bus, there are students, so...
And just for the clarification of the public, I guess all of us just reemphasized, all of these dual use spaces and alternative use, and toilet room facility modifications and waivers are all because of our substantial space size.
Correct. The only one on there that will probably stagger everything's done is the one at Murphy, because it's not a big deal, you have speech and occupation separate, and everybody's on hand.
But we would be able to, or part time, to put this in. Teach these, they get a closet.
Right. As a matter of fact, that closet would become a classroom, like a vault, and all the storage would be that, you know. That room is actually a closet for the art, but it's a fairly large room, it'll become a room of classrooms.
So we are gonna start teaching, is that instrumental music?
Instrumental music.
Excellent. Well, it was announced, I don't know if we need to sort of... Can we go back for a moment, to, a question on transportation number one?
Good.
Just out of curiosity, and as I said, I'm happy we're doing this, but any case of a real emergency, and they don't have their buses, what happens?
They don't have their own buses?
Yeah, I mean, they don't have their buses, that's why you, you two of our buses, right?
Alright, so here's, here's how I put this, it, the type of emergency we're talking about now, it's not like, you know, a kid got, ooh, this is Columbine.
Yeah.
If Columbine happened, he called me, I would send all of us to her, and say, you tell us what you need to do, our people will figure out how to, talk about the emergency on your head, and we'll work with you to get everybody, say you got a cheap, you call at any place, they would do that.
Right, we're the closest ones, so I'm glad, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was part of it too, I'm glad we're training with them, but that means we're...
And we've also staffed with these people, said the same thing, like, do you agree? Cause we were saying, hey, we should buy all these computers, store them, and, like, if you need to get touched, you need the computers, like, look, if there's an emergency at Randolph, if he calls, if somebody called from Randolph at any fifty car box, we'll send you to the car box, ten minutes to know. Cause this is not, this is a big deal, I mean, this is, you know, you're talking about international manicure, somebody having a normal thing, and doing whatever you gotta do.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that we understood the level of commitment that, that we're implying here by sending our buses over to your drill.
Well, this is not that, this is giving them two buses aside, you can get rid of their kids.
No, I understand.
But, I, I don't know, this came out once from the CCM, people, I don't know, I don't know, can we close the place, or like, well, what would happen if we didn't, we didn't explain it, and I called you, and said, Columbine just happened at Randolph, what would you do?
You're right.
We would do whatever you had to do, so it's kind of like, by doing this is not saying anything that I wouldn't do anything, or that all is, I'm sure, if that's the person that ruled it, would be like, see...
No, we're not, we're not questioning.
No, I just wanted to make sure that you understand.
I would like to make sure that you understand that, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Thank you.
Alright, go, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mrs. Lina?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Lor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Capella?
Yes.
I'm glad that we, those two.
Okay, on to the halls. Uh, we just had a personal reading tonight before this meeting, so we'll get the, uh, minutes out for that, and we have a technical reading tomorrow night.
Correct.
Okay. So those minutes will follow. Anybody else have any committee, related items, anyone to bring up?
Uh, just as a, well, I guess not to any... Uh, Foundation of Golf Outing, Monday, September twenty fifth, um, anybody that would like to attend, uh, I think, uh, the golf is one ninety five, that includes dinner, uh, golf, box lunch. Um, if you just wanna come for the evening portion, it's sixty dollars per person, it's a great event, they do a tricky trade, an auction, it's the biggest fundraiser of the year, um, so anybody who wants to help or is interested in attending, um, their website has registration, or you can certainly call me, email me, I'll be happy to, okay, I've been, I've been working pretty closely with them, and, uh, the foundation, so they're, um, um, they're very excited, and, uh, they've got a lot of new members on the foundation, so, uh, it should be, um, should be a really good event, so hopefully everybody or anybody who can make it, please.
Any recommendations?
I got something, uh, discussion about bullying prevention, I sent the email out here, that you and Mike and Steve and Sammy a while ago, um, you know, we're following this situation in Rockaway, with that, uh, young girl who committed suicide, extremely unfortunate. And I think we got a, a good policy, in terms of you reacting and dealing with these bullying incidents, what they call investigating, but I'm wondering if we're doing all we can to, in terms of preventing, and I know you have a lot of programs in place, um, you know, there are, except, you know, much questions, why we can't all be answered tonight, but, um, are we, how do we measure the success of our intervention programs, our prevention programs? Um, what do we do to train parents, besides sending home animals, if your parents just get a ton of, uh, information prompts, um, to read, but parent training is really critical and important, um, is involved with bullying, or being bullying, to make sure the, uh, parent stuff is going on. Um, also, at, um, our lunchtime A's, what type of training they, they receive, but I found out, I've seen a couple of incidents where kids are banned from serving tables, cause some of the kids don't want to sit there. So I think if you have kids sitting in the lawn with a lunch table, even by themselves, that, that could possibly be a problem, how is that dealt with, how is that identified? So, and, uh, I know I said the thing about street teenagers, I think we prefer people with a little more, see the street teenagers, presentation is common in some of the schools, I think, especially for middle schools, you know, social media can be really informative for them, but it's also very, very dangerous, so a lot of nasty people out there prey on, on pre-teens and teenagers, um, you know, I, I think that's something we should look into having here in our, our district, and, um... You know, maybe something we could have a presentation, a, a, you know, evaluation or preventative measures, how they're working, best practices, what other districts are doing, but, um, I, I just think you can see some of the surface out there, that's kind of having some of these kids, it's tragic, and I think a lot of, uh, not most of the good, it's a bad one. Don, I, I appreciate it, and I also apologize, I was on vacation, I sent the email, I have it in my inbox, but I really didn't get that far down, I was, I was working all day, I'm trying to catch up, but what I'll do is I'll take, I'll take Don's email, and he sent to a few of you, and say, I'll answer all the questions I have, and I'll give it to all of you, like, four to five, so, you know, it's, it's answered. Yeah, I was looking for answers tonight, and, uh, email's time, you know, but just, could we do more? Yeah. I think it's already, you know, are we doing enough, and also, how do we measure the results, obviously, if you had zero incidents, we'd have our executive session, section, uh...
That'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be nice, but, um, you know, cause we, you know, we're not okay in the way, or, or we're really that good that we've eliminated, but, but I think the parents, it's really, really critical, I think a lot of this starts at home, and of course, you've got some incidents where the parents don't care, so I'm not very good to turn those things around, but, um, this is just really sad, this happened to the community right next door, and just, uh...
I think I'll be thinking too, with the, um, we both be the regional district, and if this was of recurring nature, who would we swap, you know, could we, create a son's school as well?
Oh, right, yeah.
I mean, if you have each school as a coordinator, maybe you have a conversation, you know, if you have a team, cross talks, maybe you have your safety coordinator, or a mass safety, and I blame coordinator to the feeder schools.
Are you suggesting, which I think you're suggesting, is that, like, say I'm having a problem here in Denble, I want a fresh start, and, uh, you would send me to Rockaway instead, something like that? It's a good idea, actually, I'll, uh, I'll bring it up.
Maybe, uh, it's, it's a privacy thing, so maybe just coordinators, and I, each school has a coordinator, and you can reach that, like, you know, save the parents or something like that, transfer.
We added something like this for the last, you know, I mean... I'll bring it up in my next meeting, sometime, I think in October.
See, there's been a lot of, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the committee about this, and it don't run up, um... Um, and, and just off the top of my head, it's mentioned, you know, I, I don't know if it makes sense for us to form an ad hoc, like, school climate committee. And really, I wouldn't see it as a board committee, but form a community committee, where we bring in people who have interest in discussing this and, and, you know, it, it's clearly beyond the bullying laws, right? I mean, we all know what the laws are, but it's about, what do we do with the best kid thing for our students? And sometimes, as we've seen, as you and the administration have done, it gets well above and beyond just following the, the HIB laws, but it's about providing support for students and, you know, disciplinary action, or beyond just, is it bullying or is it not bullying? Um, there's a lot more to it, and it's, it's really difficult, and it's really complex, the domination, because most of it, if not, a severe portion of it often happens outside of school, so what is our involvement? But the kids still spend six, seven, eight hours a day in our classroom, so, um, whatever we can do to support, to try to help, uh, maybe that's something, I, I mean, I know there's some ad hoc things going on in the community, but, and, and to me, I think our involvement is important in expressing what we're already doing and getting feedback on what the community would like to see us do, it fits right into the strategic planning that we talked about, this was a lot of the discussion that we saw at the strategic planning meeting, so, um- I think I was waiting that one, sorry, come here.
The hero group did reach out to Grace and I, and we have scheduled some time for it to be, um, discussed, it's community, um, you know, they just created, to, to look into this. And everybody realizes it's a serious issue, and we always take that very seriously, there's always work we can do and more families and students to reach. So we do have several programs planned, we've changed even our time schedule for elementary this year to give them twenty minutes. There's a lot of research around that team building in the morning, that, that, uh, morning meeting program, uh, to, as prevention, because we really start to see each other as, as individuals. So we have made changes going into this school year to try to build into that, some relationship, preventative measures, even before some of the things that happened in the, in the recent, the recent events. But we are, we're going to be working and at least being with that group to see, is that what you're saying, like, is, are there things, what are the things that you're hearing from us? What are you seeing out there going right now, and you just?
And I, I think, just as you mentioned, there's a lot of things that we're doing that parents don't either know about or realize, even if we communicated. It's, don't learn it from us, you see us, I'll make sure to deal with this stuff, I'll get it all the time, but we need to hear it a few times, Steve. Um, so I think parents need to, to see it several different times, and see it in different ways, and hear about it, cause, um, I learned about things new that, that we're doing in the school all the time, and it's really beneficial, um, so getting that out there, that we're already doing a lot of these things is important too.
Yeah, we will definitely talk about that with Grace, soon, soon, yeah.
Yeah, cool, but I think we, I think we can talk in subsanary space, I guess. Okay, alright, uh, we'll move on to our second Republican sec, uh, section at, wow, nine fifty-three. See, that one, I guess it was at nine fifty-four. Uh, executive session?
What?
Oh, I wanted to, yeah, so we have need for executive session for, um, negotiation. Mrs. Watten, would you carry this up?
Sure. So, uh, I will to convene the executive session, and the first is the section eight, that will impose a meeting stat. The purpose of this, this session will be to discuss negotiations. Minutes of this session will enable the public, and the need for confidentiality, and all of this.
I'll say it.
Any questions, more in favor?
Aye.
How many ahs?
Five.
Five, six.
Six, okay, six ahs, one nay.
We will not, we will not need any votes, right, we'll be voting out. Rick, you can shut that down, I think.
Uh, we are in twenty minutes.
This will happen, I mean, yeah.
We got tomorrow?
Yep.